Okay, I would like to call this town council meeting to order this August 7th, 2018. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We take a couple minutes to have a moment of silence tonight to recognize all those and veterans who have passed, particularly tonight. We'd like to extend our condolences to the family of Timothy J. Lehane upon his passing of 17 July 2018. Mr. Lehane served aboard the USS Cascade ASD-16, the United States Navy during the Vietnam War. And condolences also go out to the family of Howard B. Larson upon his passing on 31 July 2018. Mr. Larson served in the 512th Field Artillery Battalion, the 8th Army, in the United States Army during the Korean War. Thank you. Council President Ted Haley is not able to make tonight's meeting, and Counselor Sean George is not able to make tonight's meeting either. So we have, I'm sure Counselor Colum Bodas will be arriving. So you are not watching a rerun from last winter. This is a live meeting tonight. I just want to remind everyone that tonight's meeting is being aired live and recorded. Moving on to the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meetings, and we have two tonight from June 26th and July 10th.
Motion to approve June 26th.
Second. There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons? Mr. Souza? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 10th, 2018. Second. Motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons, second by Mr. Souza. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes have been approved. Announcements from the President. I have one announcement tonight, and that is to remind everyone that the next council meeting after tonight will be held on Tuesday, September 11th. The original date was supposed, was going to be a week before that, so the date has been moved to accommodate the state primary election, which is scheduled for Tuesday, September 4th. So our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 11th. So this meeting will get many rebroadcasts over the next five weeks. Moving on to proclamations tonight, we do not have any. Next item on the agenda is citizens' open forum. Are there any citizens here this evening that wish to speak to the council in open form? Just all I ask you to do is step up to the microphone and state your, tell us who you are and say what you want to say.
My name is Kim Chartia, and just say what I mean.
Your address?
Oh, Leventon High Street, Bridgewater. I have questions about the smart meter. I wanted to see if we could have a discussion of opting out of it. I had initially asked for someone to come and check my smart, my meter, my analog meter, and they came, and they did just replace my analog meter with a smart meter because my, my water bill was high. And we didn't even realize it was high because we were at a get-together with other friends, and we realized with neighbors that the water was high. I don't know how long this was going on, but we, you know, I agreed to pay the $35 for them to check the meter. And then they switched it with a smart meter, which I did not want because of health concerns that it has been brought up, you know, in the past, you know, other states and everything. My daughter lives in California, there's big problems with water meters, electric meters, smart meters and everything out there. Just because something is green and it says smart doesn't mean it's actually smart. So I had concerns about it, and, you know, and I called up the water department, and I said, you know, I have concerns about, you know, cancer and different things with the mechanism inside it and everything, giving off RF radiation and stuff like that. And she's like, well, she's like, well, I have to call you back. So she called me back, and she's like, well, I think it's safe. Well, that doesn't give me confidence that your product is safe, and it doesn't give me confidence that you know anything about your product to begin with. And no one from the water department has actually contacted me back about their products, that they have no clue anything about it. So it kind of worries me that they're putting all this, these smart meters in homes and they know nothing about them. So I think that, you know, if people have concerns, they should be able to opt out of them and not be forced to have them in their homes. Or, you know, a little like, they should at least, you know, learn about them prior to them installing them and get some information about them. I mean, there's tons of stuff on the internet you can find. I mean, I have stuff here. I mean, even like in Congress, it says for pregnant people not to use smart meters, but pregnant women. Like, if that's an issue, like pediatric doctors are saying that, then there's something wrong with these meters. And, you know, you're putting it in schools where kids who have attention deficit disorders, that's just going to increase it, which isn't a good thing for children. Like, I don't have kids anymore because they're all grown up and they're out of the house, but I do, I am concerned about the kids in this town having problems in learning because kids have enough problems. I mean, granted, we have cell phones, everything else, everything's interconnected and everything has to be smart now. Everybody has to have cell phones, and everything is so great. Well, the smartphone, like the cell phones weren't so great to begin with, and like, you can't hold it up to your head now because it causes brain tumor and cancers. People didn't know that when we first got them. It took a while before, you know, we became, I guess monkeys, you know, you know, people had to be, you know, what do you want to call it? Test samples, you know? We had to find out the hard way to learn about these things, and we shouldn't have to find out the hard way. We should find out these things or test them out before we actually start putting, putting them in like schools and, you know, hospitals, they don't even have people like with, you know, pacemakers and stuff. They didn't even mention that. Like a pacemaker, you know, it's like RF, you know, it has some heating to the element. So if you have a pacemaker, you shouldn't be within so many feet of this thing, which they're not even addressing that when they're installing these in the homes. So what about people who have pacemakers? Like, you need to address all these issues and inform people of these things. So, you know, so it's not like, you know, EMTs running around to homes because people aren't aware of that if you have a pacemaker, you can't be near these things, like within a foot or whatever, you know, like, just like a microwave or whatever. But, you know, you need to inform people before you, you can't just say mandate these things to go into your home without all this information. I mean, you need to recognize that there's a problem here. And without these, you know, you check into this stuff, you'll find out there's, there's a lot more to this than you realize. I mean, I have some information, you guys are welcome to read it. And, and there's, there's plenty of stuff out there. I mean, I don't know.
Let me leave it with our county clerk. Yeah.
Thank you.
But I still didn't get the, the water bill addressed, like why it went up in the first place.
Thank you. And is anyone else that wishes to speak in open forum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Sotera, not the singer from Chicago. I live at 31 Fieldstone Circle in Bridgewater, and that's a stone meadow. And when my wife's daughter called her for one problem, I found out about another couple of problems, and I'll be very, very brief. And what I was very upset about was, 50 years ago, I was the chairman of the Community Council for Modern Local Government that studied all forms of government for a year. And the form you have right now was the best form that we found in Methuen. We changed our form to town council under this same form as this one here. And I says, this is the best representation that people can have when they have a problem. And I says, so don't worry, I'll make some phone calls, they will look into it. It's been for me, I still haven't found anything about it, but I stopped because I found out other things about these meters. They're very, very disturbing, and I'm not going to read them all, it's just that it goes from anywhere from 1,000 to 190,000 transmissions of, of the waves that they sent per day. And there's illustrations in here how different states have changed their mind after issuing these, and people getting sick left and right. And I'm not going to go into that because you can read it for yourself, pass it around, and see how much different and how hazardous these meters are. And someone's like, oh, that's not the meter. All meters, whether they be a smart meter, or whatever they call it, a great meter, or a little meter, they're all transmitting these, these waves, and they're causing health problems, and it's not, it should be looked into thoroughly. Then I found out on the, I don't know, I'm not a Facebook or internet person myself, but the town is getting 3 point something million dollars to install these meters, and they're not even looking into seeing are they safe or not safe. That's a lot of money. Who's going to pay that 3 million something thousand? The taxpayers will pay. And that's what we have, that's our job to pay, and you guys are doing a good job, but look into it. I'm not going to go into it any further than that, but it's very important. And also, I want to find out what started all this was that my wife's daughter called up and says that she's paying $300 per tax or bill, water bill, more than what the neighbors are paying, on all five neighbors, the one who has a pool, and says, what's, check my meter out. So somebody comes and changes the meter, and nobody gets back to her month after month after month after month. Why that was so much charge higher? I think should be, should be looked into, and she should be reimbursed. And if this goes through, I have now about 100 people who will do, do whatever it has to do, but we'll move, and we're unfamiliar with what we have to do with the press and everything else.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak during citizens' open forum? Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on to hearings. We have a 7:35 hearing on order FY18043, transfer order capital transfers. At the time is now 7:43, and I will open the public hearing. And if you look into your packet, this is introduced or put in by the town manager in regarding capital transfers, so I would refer to the town manager to address these, these capital transfers in the public hearing.
Mr. President, these, these capital, this capital transfer is for a number of items. This is pursuant to the capital plan, which the council has seen this spring. It's to move 397,498 dollars from the capital stabilization fund, trust fund, and to fund the following items. One is the sweeper vacuum truck lease purchase payment for 53,498. That's the fourth of five payments. The Department of Public Works forestry truck, which is 55,000. The Department of Public Works mechanic truck, which is 65,000. Downtown tree planting, which is 9,000, and then $215,000 for Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District capital needs. Tentatively, those are for school safety improvements, as well as, I believe, the telephone system in one of the schools.
Thank you. Also to note that the disposition from the committees this was sent to was voted 2 to 0 by the Budget and Finance Committee back on June 5th, and the Finance Committee voted 5 and 0 approval on June 26th. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak in favor? In favor of these capital transfers? Anybody here that wishes to speak in favor in the public? Seeing none, is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak in opposition to these transfers? Anybody here wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll refer now to my colleagues on the council for any questions regarding these transfers. Counselor Souza.
Mr. President, the, the trees, downtown trees, planting new trees, trimming the ones that are already overgrown, what are we doing with this money and how are we going to maintain those that we put into the new?
I can answer that question if you like. These, these are monies that are allocated towards the planting of new trees, which is pursuant to a council request for new trees to replace the dead ones. But I can tell you that we are also working with a developer who may very well plant some of the trees that we are allocating funds for. And if that's the case, obviously, we wouldn't spend that money on new trees, we would allocate that money on either maintaining the current trees or planting additional trees where, where we feel that they're needed.
Any other questions regarding these transfers from the counselors? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any discussion?
Only that this is another great example of how we're using our capitalization trust fund, which is a process that we see now, that is something that, as the gentleman spoke about, the council form of government put into place. It deals with free cash policy and other pieces to fund, and this is how it gets allocated. Thanks.
Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote?
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none again.
Moving on, we have a 7:40 public hearing, license revocation hearing. This format's just a little bit different than the previous one, so let's go to that one. The time now being, I think it's time, right? Under liquor violation hearing process, Mass. General Arch, Chapter 138, Section 64 states, "The licensing authorities have the notice to the licensee in reasonable opportunity for him or her to be heard by them, but may modify, suspend, revoke, or cancel his or license upon satisfactory proof that he has violated or permitted a violation of any condition thereof or any law of the Commonwealth." The council of the town of Bridgewater will hold a hearing on Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, at 7:40 PM on whether to revoke the license, liquor license issued to Patterson's Inc. Doing Business as Skip's Liquors for the premises located at 98-100 Plymouth Street, Bridgewater, Mass., 02324. The reason for revocation of such license is non-use of the license. Although the council, town council previously approved the transfer of the liquor license for the premise at 96, 98-100 Plymouth Street, Bridgewater, Mass., 02324, to Patterson's Inc. Doing Business as Skip's Liquors, the license has not been used, and Skip's Liquors is presently not open for business. The town has made a number of inquiries relative to the scheduled opening, but Skip's Liquors remains closed. So we will open the public hearing, and I would ask the license holder to please come up and just answer to these issues.
Good evening, council. I know we have gone through severe problems through that store opening in timely fashion, and finally, we are very, very close to, and I have taken some pictures today. Probably about one or two days of work pending, and we are ready for the final inspection to be done, and I would like to open this store following week. And I have pictures to pass around.
President, does Mr. Patel have his attorney here?
Is your coun, do you have a counsel here?
Okay.
We don't need him, we just want to know.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
He's here, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a target date as to when you are going to be open?
We will be finishing pretty much everything before this weekend, and schedule tomorrow, we have the gas meter, which we applied back in January, and after numerous inquiry and bunch of follow-up, they're installing it tomorrow. So that will finish my plumbing, and electrical inspector was there today. He suggested a few things, which my electrician is here today. Whole crew is actually here today, if you wanted to ask any questions, but pretty much majority of the work will be accomplished by Friday, and I like to pick up the license and apply the suppliers, the credit application, and schedule them to bring the deliveries by Monday. Monday is also a very religious day in my culture. It's the elephant god, which is Ganesh Chaturta, and I would like to start my business from that day. So we are right here on the corner.
Any questions from the counselors?
If I could, thanks. I met you probably almost five years ago, according to our documentation.
Correct.
You were in, we were down at BTV, you came in, in October, and applied for the license at that point. You and I have more gray hairs now than we did five years ago.
I, believe me, the last one month, the amount of the stress that I'm going through and the grow, I have received many comments of growing gray hairs. Not one.
So I've been, we've spoken multiple times, you've been before the council multiple times.
Correct.
If you remember Bill Rivers when he was president, he asked for almost a monthly update, which we didn't see. We had to ask several times for updates. We were told of different problems. For the benefit of the council, they have in front of them copies of emails and letters over the four years of, of this project, right? And so the concern has always been, and started at the end of really last year, about the best use of this license, right? So the best use of this license isn't to be stagnant for five years. It's, it's to have a shop that's open with a, with a business that's potentially local hiring and other things, right? So I thought when we did the transfer five years ago, that the shop that was there obviously needed maybe some repairs, and you talked about doing some construction at that point, but I thought it would be open at that point. And if the council recalls, back in January or so, December, we met again with you, and you promised a hard, hard start of the end of March, and that, that time has come and passed. And I just stopped by the business tonight on the way here, and I don't know if it's a, if it's a few days worth of work or a couple months worth of work, but I think that we need to get serious about, you know, what is this license actually going to get used? It looks closer now than in June, but I've driven past multiple times during the summer. There was zero activity on a nice day where construction would normally be happening. And when we asked for updates about, you know, are there issues, we learned about the gas meter, we learned about the easement, we learned about several other things, mostly from the town manager, not from an update from, from you during the, during a periodic update. And so we've gotten to this point, and maybe the rush in construction is because we asked for this hearing at this point, I'm not sure. I would like to think that you're going to be open soon, and that, you know, these pictures are, are something that are near completion, but I can't be certain. So I was hoping that maybe we could hear a little bit more about the business model because you can't, it's hard to open on Monday if you haven't had full inspection, you haven't had.
By Monday, I would like to start bringing the, from the supplier inventories in, and I have spoke to each and every salesman to give me a hand, to put it away and get the store started.
Right, but at this point, the town is holding the license because you haven't finalized inspection, right?
Correct.
So how are you getting past that?
So that, that's what I like to request, so I can go ahead of the curve and apply for all the, and open the account with the suppliers, so, and schedule the delivery as soon as the, all the completions I receive, the delivery will be right after and not the, past the week to, for that process to be done, and then open after I receive. So starting Monday, I'd like to start bringing the inventories in the stores.
But that would be before sign-off on the building?
We, we are planning to sign off on the building. If you have any questions, you can speak to my contractors. All of the past inspection has been correct. They never, ever pointed out that this is wrongdoing, and we had to do it right. I built it late, but I built that building very strong, and Mr. Steve Solari also mentioned that, Mr. Patel, you didn't have to spend this kind of money in the building. We did everything right in that building. So I am not hoping for any reason that it should not pass the inspection. And as soon as it's done, the very next day, if there is take one or two day more, I can hold off the delivery, or I can ask the supplier to bring it on vans there or something. But we are within the days now, not weeks.
Can we ask the town manager for his opinion on where the inspection services are?
I can get an update, I don't have an update off the top of my head, but I do know that the project is coming to a close, that appears to be out at the stage where they're outfitting the, the fixtures and fittings, but I can certainly check with the building inspector and, and get an update on exactly where that stands.
I'll yield to someone else who wants to ask any questions.
Counselor Souza?
Yes. Have any inspections been scheduled yet, from your plumbing, electrical, or general contract or whatever? Has, because that's, that makes a difference too.
Fire department has been scheduled.
Okay.
The plumbing, because the meter has not arrived yet, but the, the Columbia gas came in today and put the fixtures, they are scheduled to come out for meter tomorrow, so as soon as coming, the plumbing will be, so we, I will be calling the plumbing for Thursday.
Okay. Remember, they don't, they're closed, they're closed Friday afternoon.
Good evening, council. My name is Joe Morrison, I'm the electrical contractor and fire alarm technician over at the 98-100 Plymouth Street. The fire alarm tomorrow morning is being programmed, and the fire department's going to be coming shortly after that to sign off the sprinkler system and the fire alarm. So I'm hoping to have that by Thursday, today, tomorrow's Wednesday, right? Is tomorrow Wednesday?
Tomorrow's Wednesday.
Tomorrow's, okay. On Thursday morning, the, they'll be coming over to do the, the entire test. And I had the wire inspector over today, he had a couple of things he wants me to take care of, and he'll sign off, Walter. And so I don't think that the beginning of the week is out of line, from my perspective anyway, that everything's, I would say 95% done. There's a few fixtures that have to be installed, and the inspection signed off. There isn't a terrible amount of work that has to be done. So that, I can tell you from that perspective, that's how close the job is. There's been a tremendous amount of money spent there, and it's ready to, we're right on the verge now of opening. So if that, if that helps with any decision-making, I hope that you take that to heart. And if you have any questions, please, please feel free to, free to ask. You can always come over and have a look, everything's pretty safe over there and, and ready to roll. Any questions or?
Any other questions from the counselors?
I have a couple questions for Mr. Patel. I'm going to pass this picture around that he gave to us, and then I'll ask the question. And if, Mr. Souza, you could give it to Mr. Patel when it comes to you.
Thank you. Certainly will.
So my, my question is simple, I've got a couple more pictures I'm going to share with you that just rose to me as a non-contractor and just saying, what needs to be done in that picture if you're going to be open on Monday? Anything, or is it good to open as is?
Nothing on the plumbing side.
Nothing, it's all completely wired.
Okay, so there's no, there's no need to cover the insulation, there's no need to do anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No, and it's a fully sprinkled building.
Okay, I just, I just, it looked unfinished to me.
No, the sprinklers are there, they, they actually just did this.
But that's, that's fine, if there's nothing that needs to be done, that's fine.
Nope.
Here's another.
That's, that's the basement area.
Let me go to this one first. Go ahead. Does any other, does anyone else have a question on that picture? Mr. President?
Not in a sprinkled boiler room.
Not in a sprinkled.
Right, but if it weren't sprinkled, you'd need to hang sheetrock, yeah, yeah.
And I'm, like I said, I don't know anything about construction, I'm just picking out things that don't look really, really quick to me.
Neither do I and I will never pick again.
What's he going to say here? Oh, pole in the middle of the aisle, well, see this stuff may not be in place yet. There's the counter.
You got us on this one too.
Location.
Oh, I'm just picking out three pictures that.
I'm trying to guess what you're picking at.
And what, what in that picture needs to be done before you could open on Monday?
So we did have on the right side, all the wind racks has put in. The remainder of the two wind racks that's sitting over here, we have put the bottom piece up to today, 4:00. So these will get lifted up and put it on the second stage. And these.
What, what, when will that be complete? Before Monday? What, which day? Because I'd like to come down and visit.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Tomorrow it will be done.
Thank you. Anything else that needs to be done before it opens on Monday in that picture?
We still, we still need to put one more, the, the shelf space, one entire aisle, which right now we have the cooler shelf sitting around over there and as soon as the cooler shelf go in, these gondolas will, probably about 16 feet gondola system, which we have sitting in the basement and that takes about three, four hours to put it.
Okay, and someone's scheduled to do that before Monday?
Correct.
Could you give us the name of that person?
That's myself and my manager who is going to work.
Okay, all right. And it will be done before Monday?
Jim, the name is Jim.
Okay, and then last, last picture that I found.
So that cooler walls is completely done and the ceiling has been halfway finished. The another halfway will be finished by another contractor by tomorrow evening. And as soon as that done, the door will come and the shelf will go in.
So it sounds like everything will be done by Friday, by the end of the day on Friday?
Correct.
Okay.
It's looking like it.
It's looking like it.
Yes.
That, well, that's not a yes. And frankly, after five years, unless I have a yes, I don't know how I can support not revoking the license. And if, and if, and if the, and if the yes, and if, and if I support the license and the yes turns into a no, then I will call for an emergency hearing of this council to absolutely revoke this license.
Only thing I cannot speak for is if something, building inspector or fire department or plumbing department will ask something to do additional work or it needs to be corrected, only that reason. Other than that, yes, myself, we will be completing Friday, store setup, everything.
Okay, thank you. I, I think everyone's seen these, right? Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Any other questions from the counselors? Counselor Wood?
I have two, well, at least two additional questions. So what about the second floor, is that complete?
Yes, the second coat of paint is pending. 50% of the trim. Can you please come over?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gabriel Burudi, I'm the contractor. I'm responsible for finishing up the job over there. I actually built it and I'm now finishing it up. All the trim is in place, all the doors in place, everything is done on second floor. I only get to put the steps on tomorrow morning, going up the stairs, that's about it, is left on that job. And touch-up paint, the first coat has been done, just going to do the touch-up paint and then after that will be done with the trim and that's it, the paint of the drum. Everything else has been done, second floor, first floor, everything is ready from my part. Flooring, everything is done, so as far as I'm concerned, everything's in order for you guys, for him by the end of the week. I should be, basically I should be out of there by tomorrow.
You should, but are you?
I will. Trust me, I want to get this thing going, believe me, I've been, I've been going through this with Mr. Patel since 2011. I went from day one and I stuck with him and I built the building in the thick of it, December, January and February, to my knees in snow. And I did it in that, in that period of time. Six weeks, it was all weather tight and like I promised him and then everything, as far as I'm concerned, every time I come up with a date for him, it's done. So I'm very confident as far, as far as that point. Any questions?
Any question, any further questions from the counselors? Counselor Wood?
Yeah, second question. So when does the railing go on the ramp?
The ramp, right now we're in the process of purchasing the material and the guy, my, my partner, he's going to weld it together and put it on within the next three days.
So it will be done in place?
In place.
Ready for inspection by Friday?
Yeah, right, for the inspection.
And is there anything left on the paving? I saw that there was paving this week.
Pavement? Only the striping left, which I wanted to clean the parking lot once, all the debris and everything and then would stripe.
Okay. So it, it sounds like you were able to construct the building in six weeks and within a couple months getting it, getting it ready, but we're in year five here, so, you know, are we certain that we're at the end of this project and you're going to open the door?
Yes, I am. Believe me, I suffered more than anybody else, swear to God. I've been in the meetings here too with you guys.
Honestly, I'm hesitant to give any approval of that until building inspectors, fire and everyone else signs off on the building. I know you have, you know, a holiday and whatnot, but until all the, all the signatures are in place, that the building is, is safe, sound, tight and ready, ready to go, I don't, I think, I don't think the council should, or the town manager should give up the license to enable the vendors to, to put, put stock in there.
Can I just ask a point of information?
Yes.
The license is in place now, right? They, they have the license.
In my opinion, I'll refer to the town manager, my view is the license is issued to them. I think we held it, didn't we hold it in abeyance to be released to him upon the completion of the project? Is that correct?
I believe, I believe that's correct, yes.
Because the agenda says this is a revocation hearing, so that mean it's in place but kind of frozen and we're thinking about revoking it? Is that what this hearing is about?
We transferred the license five years ago and we've renewed it four times since, or three times since.
Right now, there is nothing that would hold up releasing the license right now until, unless, they need to show that the project is complete and then the license will be released.
Right. So I'm still unclear, do we need to take an action to have, to release the license?
No.
No, the council doesn't need to take an action to release the license. We, and this is fairly common, where we, the council votes a license and for instance, you may have, you know, outstanding fees due or there's some, something that the applicant needs to do to, to complete the work that they've, they've got to do on the, on the license. Routinely, the council will approve the license, but we will hold that physical license until the action has been completed and then we'll hand over the physical license.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the counselors? Any questions at all? No. Seeing none, I will ask the licensee if you have any closing statements, any closing thoughts you would like to say.
So if I am understanding correctly, if you wanted to hold on to the license, that will be fine, I have no problem, but that will increase my time to open that door. So I wanted to process, it's a time process to place an order, open an account. It takes probably about a week of process, which I wanted to complete or start at, at least, and start scheduling delivery by Monday. But if, if you wanted to wait, council wants to wait till the final occupancy permit, that is fine, but from that point it will be a week, which is Friday we are planning to. So I cannot open any business for next Fri-, I mean, until the next Friday, it will be open following Monday.
I don't think we want to wait, I think that's the whole point of this hearing is we want you to get the project complete, have the license issued. We don't want to hold it any longer.
Right.
The, the risk you're taking is losing it.
No.
That we don't want to hold it anymore, we want to, we want to issue it to you, but we want the project complete. We are going to hold it for good, give it to someone else.
I, I, what if I understood from Mr. Wood is he wants to see the occupancy permit first before you release the physical license to me?
Well, he can go, you can go look at it, I mean, I don't think we need to see it here, do we? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. President?
No, if I may.
Yep.
What I was suggesting was that we have the town sign off on the occupancy permit before handing the physical license over to the, over to the owner. To ensure that the building is completed satisfactory, we've had five years of delay.
Right.
My further suggestion might be, and, and this is open to discussion, I guess, is that we continue this hearing until September 11th, which is our next meeting, under the condition that once the occupancy permit is, is granted, the license can be turned over to the owner and the owner can then continue on with, with business. And if we find by September 11th meeting that it, that, you know, the building failed for whatever reason, it looks, I mean, the pictures look good, it sounds, sounds good, you know? If it fails for any reason, then we come back and discuss that at, at that point.
Any, Counselor Souza?
I, I don't see where the occupancy permit should hold him up from finishing and getting all his supplies in, okay? It'll definitely hold him up from opening his door to his customers, but as far as letting them finish the building, let him get all his supplies in, get everything ready to go, I don't think the occupancy permit should hold that up.
Counselor Fitzgibbons?
No.
So one scenario, he says there's basically a one-week lag between receiving the permit and getting stock in, because he needs a license to order stuff. So if we made the issuance of the, of the license contingent on full, you know, certificate of occupancy, then it just means another week delay. So, and when he can open it, you know, people seem eager for him to open, but it would, if we want to hold on to the license to make sure the building passes all inspections, then it will mean a week before he can actually open. So.
I don't think that's in front of us, I don't think that particular issue is in front of us. I think the, the license has been issued to him, it's only being held until he gets signed off from the building. Being complete, the project being complete.
Counselor Fitzgibbons?
If I might, we're here to decide whether we want to revoke the license, whether, whether this person after five years has forfeited their right to have a license and that somebody else who's more responsible would be able to take that license and, and create a business that actually opens and runs and then sells alcohol. I, I get concerned when I hear the, the person, the, the owner of the place saying he wants to open on Monday and it's Tuesday night and it takes a week to get things going, that already puts him at next Wednesday. So, you know, this is just another case of, I, I just don't understand how time works in, in this world of Skip's Liquors right now, because we were told a certain day and then it moves and then we're told a certain day and it moves. And then just tonight, we're told a certain day and then it's going to move again because it takes a week to get an order in and to get things going. So I, I'm just very concerned about the timeframes that we're hearing and I'm, color me not convinced that, that this will be done by the end of the week. Whether we need to revoke the license is something we can decide on after we close this hearing, but I, I completely agree with Mr. Wood's suggestion that nothing be done until it's absolutely signed off on by the town, that the, the license, if we choose not to revoke it, stays with the town manager until he's satisfied that everything's all set and then it, it, it leaves this building.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Gallagher, I just want to clarify something with you, Mr. Gallagher. I understand that the issue of delaying it or not is not before us. My point was, if we decide we'd want to hold the license until all the inspections are complete, then he certainly wouldn't be able to open until Wednesday. That would then necessitate a week lag, so just pointing that out.
All right, I'm just allowing him to make closing statements. Does anybody have any more questions for, for the licensee? We will have our discussion. Let's, let's have the.
I actually do. Mr. Patel, you said, to address Mr. Fitzgibbons' question about, so if you had the license in hand tomorrow, you wouldn't be able to open until Tuesday or that week lag between when you have the license and you get stock in, is, can you clarify that?
I, I need to, yes, if I have the license by tomorrow, I will be start filing the applications with the suppliers and as soon as the application comes, okay, which it will, because of others, two stores I have, I never had a problem paying with the companies. And the second phase comes in is salesman assigned to me, which my ex-salesman, and they will start taking the orders and then truck will be followed as long as I have the occupancy permit in my hand, until then I can hold off the truck or I can even still bring it in and not open to public and start setting it up.
Right, so it's not necessarily a full week between the time you get your license, vendors, vendors deliver?
Correct.
The goods, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the licensee? Any questions at all? Any further comment from you before we close the hearing and we discuss what we're going to do amongst ourselves? Any other comments?
No.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at 8:18 PM. The next thing, the next step here is to determine whether the licensee violated or permitted a violation of the license or of Massachusetts law, or we find that there was no violation occurred.
I'd make a motion that we find there was a violation.
There's a motion by Counselor Fitzgibbons that there was a violation. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second is discussions, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
That doesn't mean we have to revoke the license, but there certainly has been a violation by not opening. The licensee cannot cease operations, sit silent and avoid all contact with local board without facing the real peril of cancellation of the license, as Mr. Dutton wrote in his letter. So I would urge the board to find a violation.
Counselor Wood?
I agree, we, we've had a number of, that letter included a number of different correspondence with various promises and, and just, just the last action, I'm glad you're here, but there was a certified letter, I think that was rejected or not accepted, which is a formal process of communication between the town and, and you, and I, I found that action kind of surprising, but I, I agree with Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Okay, any other comment regarding the motion from the counselors? Okay, that, again, the motion is that there was a violation, been seconded. Mr. Columbonis?
I just have a question for Mr. Rollins. If we do find that it, the, the terms of the license have been violated. If we do find that the terms of the license have been violated, and that, we don't necessarily need to revoke if we find that there--
You have a litany of options.
There's several options that--
You can modify the license.
I just wanted to make sure our hands weren't tied in that way. Thank you.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote, does not require a roll call vote. Okay, all those in favor that there was--
Mr. Gallagher, could I just make a motion for a roll call vote?
Sure, there's a motion for a roll call vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? No. So, the motion is that there will be a roll call vote regarding the violation.
Is that a show of hands, or is that by roll call vote?
That should be just a show of hands. I mean, can we have a vote on the motion for a--
All those in favor of doing a roll call?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed?
No.
No, okay. There will be a roll call, one no, six to one, six to one. Yes.
Mr. Columbonis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Okay, so the council has found that there was a violation of the license, so here are our options.
May I ask for a point of information from the town manager before we get to the options? The town currently holds, physically holds the license.
Correct.
Is the town, and maybe Mr. Rollins too, is the town planning to hold that license until the town signs off on the building?
That would be my intent, my intent, excuse me, to hold the license until the CO is issued.
Thank you. Okay, so since the council has found that the licensee has violated, a violation has occurred, these are our options. We can take no action, can issue a warning, we can modify the license, adjust the hours, et cetera, suspend the license for a certain period of days, revoke the license, or cancel the license. Those are our options.
Mr. Gallagher, a point of information to the town attorney? If we suspend the license for a certain period of days, does that have to be a time certain?
Yes.
Okay, so it can't be until--
No.
--such time?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Columbonis?
Mr. Rollins, could we, less formally, could we direct the town manager to not release the license until all inspections are cleared?
I suppose you could modify the license to have that as a contingency as part of the license, right? So, part of your revocation hearing, you have the option, as explained by Counselor Gallagher, to modify the license, so you could probably make a specific proviso relative to that, modifying the license.
Thank you.
Counselor Souza?
It just seems like so much pressure is put on, and I, let's get this done as quickly as we can, and what we've just done in this conversation, let's put it off a week, okay? I said earlier, the approval of the building, all the work is done by all the departments, out of the inspector's office, they're saying it's going to be done by Friday. Mr. Patel is saying he can't make any contractual agreements with his suppliers until he has the license in his hand, so, and then it's going to take him maybe a few days, maybe a week, before he gets his supplies in and gets it all put together and everything, and so what we're doing is, instead of him having his supplies in on Monday or Tuesday of next week, we're saying, wait another week, and then get your supplies in and then put it together, and it just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, you know, let's get, we saw the pictures, we saw what was done--
Mr. Gallagher, a point of order, do we have a motion that we're discussing? I don't believe we do.
I'll make a motion, but we're discussing the options of violations, but there is no motion, no. If I may, may I make a motion to modify the license to make it, release contingent on the CO, certificate of occupancy, being signed off by the town?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Wood?
Well, I think Mr. Patel stated just a few minutes ago about the relationship with his other stores and the suppliers he has, so I would imagine that there are predictable things that he, that the suppliers can do without him having a license, knowing what the store might need for supplies, knowing who the salesman might be approved. They don't necessarily have to deliver the stock to the store or to Mr. Patel in order to get what they would feel is preparation for a new store. I'm going to leave that up to the business owner, so--
May I?
I think the, I think the structure of, you know, a week, 10 days, whatever, after five years is fully acceptable.
May I say--
This is, no, we're done, we're done. We're discussing the options, we found a violation, we're discussing the options amongst ourselves, and we have a motion now, and that's what we have to discuss. I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, Mr.--
So, I'm just saying that I think, I think we've gone five years, let's execute the certificate of occupancy, make sure that the sprinklers, the gas fittings, the everything else connected to this business are solid, signed off and done, and let the guy open his business, but let's have that happen first, so that's the reason for my motion.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I couldn't have said it better than Mr. Wood.
I'm just, I'm just curious as to what's the difference between what's being held now for pretty much all those reasons you just stated, so what's the difference? What are we really doing? We're not really doing any--
So, the hearing is on revocation--
Right.
But what we heard was, we would actually, he would actually like an early release of the license so he can go and ask for his supplies to be delivered to his store that hasn't had the CO finished yet.
We're formalizing a condition, basically.
If I may, just as a point of order for you all, I just heard from the attorney that had previously represented or does represent the applicant, and he indicated that it may be that it's a temporary CO relative to the bottom level where they're going to operate the business, and the CO for the upstairs that I guess is going to be some sort of residency may not issue, so you may want to have a caveat if it's simply the temporary CO or the overall CO of the entire building.
So, this is news to me.
Me as well, I just heard it while I was sitting here.
Mr. Columbonis?
I would offer an amendment to place a condition that the CO for the first floor be issued before the license is--
I'll make a second for discussion.
Second for discussion? Go ahead.
I'm not too concerned if the upstairs apartment remains vacant, so that covers us.
I'm very concerned if the upstairs apartment's going to continue to be having construction done, and how does that affect the flow of traffic around the place? How does it affect what's going on and the commerce that's being done at the building? We heard that everything was going to be set for Monday. I didn't hear anything else. Did anyone else hear anything else?
Everything was going to be done, yep.
Yeah, so, this makes me even a bit more, it made me rethink and think about revocation at this point, because now I'm feeling like I'm not being dealt with fairly, not being dealt with honestly. So, that's my comment on the amendment. I'm going to oppose the amendment, but I wanted to discuss it.
Mr. Columbonis?
Can I, through you, Mr. Dutton, does the town receive property taxes on an apartment that's unfinished but doesn't have a CO?
The town assesses whatever progress is done as of January 1st of each calendar year, and assesses based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's, all right, Mr. Wood?
No, I'm coming on the motion. I heard, as Mr. Fitzgibbons, I think, and all of us heard, was that it's going to be complete, that it's just touch of paint upstairs, that the contractor is putting in stairs by the end of the week, and he is done. I don't know why a contingent or a temporary would be on the first floor and not have the sign off on the second floor. I'm in, I'm in favor of the whole thing, so I'll actually be voting against the amendment on that.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye, no. I think that's--
I question the vote, could we have a roll call vote?
I think it's six to two.
Oh, you heard that?
Five to two.
I couldn't hear that.
Okay, we'll do, a motion by Counselor Fitzgibbons to do a roll call vote, is there a discussion? A second, I mean?
Second.
Second, any discussion on doing a roll call vote on the amendment, the vote on the amendment? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's not a roll call.
This was on the roll.
Oh, aye, sorry.
I thought that's what you said, you wanted a roll call.
Sorry, yeah, no, I do.
He does, okay, that's what the vote was. Okay, this is a--
No, it's not unanimous. No, for the roll call vote. You're welcome. Very clear.
No.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Mr. Columbonis?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Three in favor, four against.
Okay, so that does not pass. Now, we're under the main motion, which is to modify the license as stipulated by Counselor Wood. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Columbonis?
I believe, I suspect Mr. Patel has every incentive in the world to get his business up, and I think for us to, I mean, yes, it's taken a long time, and yes, he has been not been as communicative with us as he should have been, but I don't think it's a great harm to the public to not have another liquor store up and in town. He's not selling milk and bread and infant formula. It's August, no one's really around, well, his main market is not around, that's for sure. I don't see a benefit to putting him off, to not allowing him to open as soon as he can. I understand that we want to retain the condition that the building be done before we issue the license, but I think, especially in light of the fact that there are other holders of liquor licenses in town who have not, have also been in violation of the state liquor law, there's a holder of a license right in the center of town who's had a license for more than 10 years without, with the vacant building, so I'm afraid we've been maintaining a double standard here. I realize there are different types of licenses, one's for service as a restaurant, the others, this is for a package store, but I think this is undue pressure on Mr. Patel. I'm sure he wants to open the business and get revenue in, so.
Counselor Loesch?
Mr. Columbonis, I somewhat agree, I think there's a different level, to your point, there are different licenses, and I think there are more of the other kind than there are of this one, so that's fine. I agree with the fact that we should just hold on to the license, but we also have to be very cognizant that the town was not always clear with Mr. Patel on what was supposed to be done, and we, as a town, have gone back and made mistakes in this process as well, so let's not pretend that we're infallible, we have not, and there are documentation where the town had messed up in his process as well, so let's, I want to be clear that that has happened, and this has not been a smooth execution of the license or the construction on either side of the house.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Through you to my fellow two counselors, so I'm assuming you're going to oppose Mr. Wood's motion, is that correct? Of modifying the--
No.
Okay, all right.
You know what happens when you assume.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if you had a different remedy than Mr. Wood's motion, because I'm open to--
I would have made it.
Okay, I'm open to hearing it.
Don't have one.
Mr. Wood?
I agree in principle, which is, we want, I'm very in favor of businesses opening, but given the history, we said, we heard at the beginning of the year that the rush was on and it would be March, and I think this is the last piece that we can hold on to, to make sure that, as we heard multiple speakers tonight say, that the paint will be dry on Friday, the railing will be installed by Friday, the refrigerators will be done by Friday, the Columbia gas will be in by Friday, and we'll be ready to go. So, in my mind, that puts the, probably the furthest extent of an opening for the store at August 21st, which is still weeks ahead of the freshmen moving into BSU, so I think, you know, we're probably in a good space. If there was going to be a rush on, it would have happened in May, or April, or June, and we shouldn't even be sitting here tonight making these discussions, so hopefully everybody supports the notion to the amendment to the license. Thanks.
Thank you. My comments are that I probably will vote against the motion, I just think that, I don't think there's a difference between the modification and the fact that the town manager has the license and is not going to give it to you until your building's been signed off, so I don't really see the difference here. My, my feeling would be, is we don't meet again until September 11th, that's five weeks, and if you weren't open by then, I'd be, I'd be more inclined to revoke the whole thing, because you say you got a week, I mean, there's five weeks before our next meeting, but that's, that's neither here nor there. Issuing a warning probably, probably would have been a better thing, but those are my two cents on what's happening. Mr. Columbonis?
I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Move the question.
That just stops the discussion.
Stop discussion and vote. There's a second. Any discussion on the motion to--
Yeah. Yeah, discuss.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
No.
No, okay. So, we now going to take a roll call vote on this, or just, yeah, so it'll be a roll call vote, on the main motion to modify the license as stipulated by Counselor Wood? Roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. Columbonis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. George, I'm sorry, Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Four in favor, three against.
Okay, so the motion to modify has passed, and--
I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing on September 11th.
We closed it.
It's closed, it's closed. I don't think we can, it's closed.
Can we reconsider the closure?
Can we continue the discussion of the action?
I suppose, in theory, whoever closed the hearing could make a motion to reconsider the closure of the hearing, you could reopen the hearing, and then, but that gets a little excessive, so the better approach would be you vote on the revocation, and if you want to hold another hearing, you properly notice a public hearing on a new revocation.
Then, I would like to, well, since that's not in order, like to make a motion to apply a warning at this motion and put on the agenda another revocation hearing for September 11th.
There's a second, any discussion?
Is that enough time?
September 11th for the noticing?
Yeah. So, so the intent, and thank you about the hearing, but the intent is allow Mr. Patel to finish his business, get his license after the sign off, get the stock involved, and he'll probably be open for a couple weeks, and then by September 11th, maybe it's a no issue, and maybe, maybe we're all done and happy to stop off and purchase a bottle in celebration, right?
Very good.
But if it fails, then we have the option to have a new hearing on September 11th to revoke the license, because something went terribly wrong with the story that we just heard.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, that's what's going to happen.
Okay.
Okay, any, anything else? That's it. Moving right along.
Hope to not see you in this room again.
No. We are going to now move on to our 7:50 public hearing. At 8:39. Okay, so item GA is public hearing, petition P 2018-014 amend alcohol license, Greyhound Group LLC doing business as Greyhound Tavern, change of manager of record and transfer of stock.
Motion to approve?
Second. We have to hold a hearing first.
Well, we have to have a public hearing, sorry.
Oh, public hearing first. So, I'll open the public hearing, it's 8:50 PM. Could the petitioner please present to us what is going on and what's going to happen down there and who's going to be in charge?
Good evening, my name is not Mark. My name is Edward Gilday. Come on up, Nick. I represent the Greyhound Group LLC, DBA Greyhound Tavern. This is Nick Palermo. He's the candidate for being the new manager at the facility, and he's a new owner. This was originally approved for two owners, Michael Johnson was one and Gino Sergio was the other. The manager was Bob Sergio. Bob Sergio and Gino Sergio decided they did not want to be in the restaurant business. And as a result of making that determination, sought to find somebody who would take over their position as the owner and as the manager of the facility, Nicholas Palermo. A gentleman with a great deal of experience in the restaurant industry came to the fore, and he became the new owner and the new manager.
Thank you. Is there anybody here from the public wishing to speak in favor? Any general questions from the public wishing to speak in favor of this transfer? Anybody here wishing to speak in favor from the public? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak in opposition to this transfer? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any questions from the councilors regarding this transfer? Any questions? Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, if I may, I'd like to offer congratulations to the establishment. I know that the opening, I want to say, was sometime right around the beginning of the year. And I've had occasion to frequent the establishment, I find it to be a fine establishment. I think you're deserving of success. That said, I, I do have a question or two. I know that, beginning sometime early in May of this year, there were a number of Facebook public media postings that announced Mr. Palermo's appointment as a new manager. And that caught me a bit off guard because the council was not aware at that time of any such activity. I inquired of the town manager's office on May 24th whether in fact the town had received official notification of this, and was the process to give effect to a change of manager and change of ownership, was that in, in process? I was told that a letter had been received, but nothing further. And that was just at about the, the end of May, I want to say May 29th. I raised the question concerning the status here in the council on June 26th at our regular meeting of that day. And I inquired, I made inquiry of the town manager at that time, it's reflected in the minutes that are before, it's tonight that we approved earlier this evening. Town manager did respond to me within a matter of days beyond that to indicate that, at that point, no, nothing further had been received by the town. I know that the notice was published in, I believe that was in the Brockton Enterprise on the 26th of July. And here we are tonight on August 7th to consider the matter. And when I look back over that timeline, I see a period of just about three months. And I'm just concerned about that length of time. Because frankly, it seems excessive to me, I, I don't know the reason for it, I, I would appreciate any insight into that. And I am concerned about the fact that so many public announcements or public pronouncements about the change of manager having already been given effect were made as early as early May of this year. So I am concerned about that, and I guess I would, I would ask the licensee or his attorney, Mr. Gilday, if you can comment on that.
Sure, I can comment on it for you, Mr. Chase. There were extensive discussions and negotiations that took place in connection with the transfer of ownership and transfer of management. Some of the former owners were in a hurry to vacate and cease operating the facility. They were eager to leave, but we had not yet completed the documentation for signing up the new managers, and some of us may have gotten out ahead of ourselves in announcing what was done. But it did take us a while to, we'll call it, paper the deal. Document it contractually, and then prepare the forms and submit the forms for the various changes with the ABCC and the town.
I understand. Just one further question on that point, and that is that we are in receipt of a copy of the members' consent by the LLC approving the approving the change, that is to say, the change in management and the change in ownership. And it really just caught my attention because I'm no stranger to the drafting or the review of corporate or LLC actions of this type. And what I found particularly striking about this particular member action is that the action itself is not dated. And there is no reference to an effective date with respect to either of the actions that it purports to authorize. Which, together with my previous comments about the rather extensive, in my opinion, timeline involved, really caused me some concern as to when in fact, the LLC, which is the licensee, did take the action approving the change in management and the change in, in ownership.
The reason, Mr. Chase, that the date might be missing from the corporate resolution is because it was included in contracts that were signed simultaneously.
And do you know, I realize you probably don't have it before you, but do you know what would be the date of the actual agreement underlying this corporate consent?
I don't know, but I'm happy to take a look. I don't have it with me, Mr. Chase.
All right. I can understand you weren't necessarily planning to have that with you this evening, that's, that's fine. Well, I do appreciate your explanation with respect to the timeline that I outlined. Again, I just found it rather disappointing just as a citizen of the town to have learned about it by social media and knowing full well that the council had not been even approached at that time. But I think that, in my opinion, I can move past that. I have no further questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to the petitioners by the council? Any questions? Okay, are you going to keep the same name?
Yes, sir.
You are, okay.
Sure.
If, if, if you decide to change it, give me a call, I have some ideas. That's fine. Okay. I will now close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion to approve and second, any discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None.
None. By the way, I'm your town councillor for District 6.
Thank you.
This does require a roll call vote, no, does not require a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And now we have to move on to P. B., Petition P. 2018-015, licensing of automatic amusements in establishments without alcohol. Shahara Balajaran doing business as Oh Baby The Cave. That's not a song either, is it?
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Shahara, so I took over The Cake in the Box, 15 Broad Street. It's going to be called The Cave. What we're trying to do is make it into a video game lounge, but we also have oversized Connect Four, oversized Uno Cards, oversized Jenga. We want to make it a community thing, so for families, the college students. I've been talking to tons of people, I've been renovating for about a month now, and I've been talking to tons of people in the town, and they're super interested, they said it probably can give, you know, the kids a place instead of hanging out at Cumberland Farms. You know, we're excited about it, and it's something positive, you know, and I'm trying to bring that to the community. If you guys want to look at some pictures. So the game plan is about, there's a couple of TVs on the wall with a couple Xbox and PlayStations. Because the place is really small. We wanted to give it the feel as it's a home away from home, so we throw in a couple of lounge couches, a couple of tables and chairs. I was thinking maybe once a month, you know, maybe some karaoke nights, movie nights, video game tournaments and things like that. It's something we would charge by the hour. And like I said, it's more of a community thing, we want, everybody's welcome, they are all ages, you know, adults, and it looks really good. We did a good job, I think.
Thank you. Any questions from the councilors? Intertain a motion to approve the petition.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Wood?
No, good luck with the, with the model. I, I think that downtown could benefit from exactly what you're talking about. Have a hangout spot. I don't know if you have age groups in mind, but...
Yeah, I was thinking more like, you know, the younger kids would be welcome till about 6:00 PM, and then that 13 and older, I got a couple of waivers done, you know, for safety, just because video games has a lot of different, you know, graphic and different language and things like that, so I do have a waiver that everybody, even if you're over the age of 18, you do have to sign. You know, we have great insurance and things like that, we made sure that it's a safe environment, and we're ready to open whenever, you know, we get approved, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
There's no question, I have a, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I think it's going to be refreshing to have something downtown that's going to bring people downtown.
I think so, and
Evening.
And I talked to a lot of, you know, my surrounding neighbors, and I told them, I said, you know, we're not, we're not going to be competitive, we're going to bring people, that's going to bring more business, you know, so I'm excited about that, and the, all the feedback we've been getting, it's, it's really exciting, and I mean, we're, we're pleased to be here, we're from South Shore, we live in Quincy. And we're, we're just excited to be here.
Anything else? This does require, does not request, is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. We'll have to come by. Moving on, presentations, we have none. Moving on to the town manager's brief summer report. Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, if it, if it pleases the council, I'd be happy to defer my report till after the meeting, or not after the meeting, towards the end of the meeting, I know we have a number of employees here who have, are here for a variety of reasons on the agenda coming up, so that's if it pleases the council, or I can drone on.
There's a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to defer the town manager's report till the end of the meeting. So moved. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to discussions, none, committee reports, any committees wish to report tonight? Mr.? Did you raise your hand? Mrs. Loesch? Did you raise your hand? Okay, no committee reports tonight. Legislation for action, these all do require a roll call vote. Order FY 19-008, transfer order sewer reserve capital special purposes, at their meeting held on 7/10/18, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend approval, the Finance Committee met on 8/6/18. I believe they voted unanimously to approve it. Disposition will be provided at the meeting, and they voted to approve this last night. Intertain a motion to approve order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wood?
No, we had a good discussion in Budget and Finance a while ago. So we're all set.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Roll call vote, actually.
Roll call.
That's a roll call vote, sorry.
It's okay. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodas?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Order FY 19-009, transfer order water reserve capital special purpose, at their meeting held on 7/10/18, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend approval, the Finance Committee met last night, and they voted to approve this as well. I'll entertain a motion to approve order as...
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second, any discussion? Mr. Wood?
No, again, we, we talked about this in the Budget and Finance, and you'll notice that it comes out of the Reserve Fund for Water and specific use.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None.
This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodas?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Next order FY 19-010, ratification, contract ratification of the Police Association, at their meeting held on 7/10/18, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend approval. The Finance Committee met last evening, and they voted to approve this as well.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to approve, any discussion? Mr. Wood?
No, I, I want to extend the appreciation to the bargaining unit for the, for the work that they do, both professionally and, and with the collaboration with the town. I read through the contract, as did the other members, and, and it looks very good, thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'd just acknowledge the police officers here tonight, and thank them obviously for their service to the town, but also for a very, what seemed fair and equitable negotiation between the town and the, the association to come up with a, with a great agreement, so I'm going to be voting in favor of it.
Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodas?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Good. Next item, order F. 19-011, acceptance of a gift, Bridgewater State University, the Budget and Finance Committee met 8/7/18, and, and voted to approve 2 to 0 this gift. Finance Committee met last evening and also voted to approve this acceptance of a gift from BSU. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any discussion? Mr. Wood?
Uh, once again, I want to thank BSU for their generous gift. As you see from the description, it splits out between, I think it's Police Fire and Roadways. So it, it goes to, toward supporting the neighborhoods and town in, in general. And once again, thank you to BSU.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just echo Mr. Wood's sentiment that BSU, and particularly President Clark, have always been, in the last five years that I can remember, anyway, very supportive of the town, and not just this gift, but all sorts of collaboration with the town, and we want that to continue.
Thank you. Just for the, just for the record, the gift amount is $55,000 from BSU. And I appreciate the continued cooperation we have with the university as well. Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodas?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
And order FY 19-014, transfer order funding for property appraisals at 46 Summer Street and 38 South Street. The Budget and Finance Committee met this evening, and we voted 2 to 0 to approve.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Oh, okay.
I live nearby.
I'm sorry. And Councilor Columbodas is recusing himself from this order, and he has left the room. The finance, the Budget and Finance Committee met before this meeting and voted 2 to 0 to approve this. And the Finance Committee met last evening and voted to approve this as well. Is, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion to approve and second, is there any discussion?
Uh, just maybe further explanation of the, of the amount. The majority of the amount is for the property, as everyone knows, as the mobile station to have an appraisal finished on that. And the... to have an appraisal finished on that, and the remainder of the amount, which is much, much smaller, is to complete the appraisal on the property that sits behind the Academy Building.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None.
Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote, and it does require a nine tenths vote, so we pretty much all need to vote for it to pass. So those require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, none against.
Next petition, P 2018-016, state... Oh. Hold on. Tuesday, the fourth day of September 2018, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for the purposes of the citizens and voters of Bridgewater to cast their votes in the state primaries for candidates and political parties for the following offices. Senator in Congress, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer and Receiver General, Auditor, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senator in General Court for the First Plymouth and Bristol Senatorial District, Representative in General Court, Eighth Plymouth Representative District, District Attorney for Plymouth County, Clerk of Courts, Plymouth County, Registered Deeds, Plymouth County, and County Commissioners, Plymouth County. I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None.
Mr. Wood?
I'll threw you to the Attorney, I ask the question I always ask.
Every time.
If the council fails to approve this, would the election be in jeopardy?
My opinion is, it would not, because I suspect there would be other actions, legal actions, that the town attorney and the town manager would take at that point in time.
We should avoid those, so I will be voting in favor of this.
Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote. And Mr. Columbodis has rejoined the meeting, so he can vote on this.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
I will pass around the sheet that we all need to sign to make it official. Moving on to old business ordinance, FY 18-018, ordinance, zoning ordinance. Amend the zoning bylaw 11.10, Zoning Board of Appeals membership. The Community and Economic Development Committee and Planning Board conducted a joint public hearing on 7/23/18. At the conclusion of the meeting, the Planning Board voted unanimously not to recommend this measure, and the Community and Economic Development Committee voted unanimously not to recommend this measure. This measure may not be adopted this evening, as it requires additional advertising. I put this on the floor to see what the council wishes to do. Is there a motion to approve it? Or send it to advertising? I strike that, or I'd like to hear from the committees as to their disposition and rationale, or we just not send it to advertising?
As Chair of the Community and Economic Development Committee, it was, we unanimously, as well as the Planning Board, felt that it just wasn't warranted, that we didn't see the benefit of increasing the membership of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We didn't see how it would achieve the goals of spurring business development in town.
Mr., I'd just, I'd like to ask Counselor Souza, this was your ordinance?
Yes.
I just, you sit on the committee as well.
No, I don't. I got removed.
Do you want to comment on?
I'm not going to comment, because I presented it, okay? Unless you don't want me to.
No, that's okay, I just didn't know if you had any further. It's unusual that something comes back where two committees voted no, so I didn't know what the petitioner thought of the rationale.
Well, the petitioner thinks, okay, that we have such a poor reputation in town as to many, many problems that came out of our committees and boards, and many of them hampered small businesses, okay? And when you have a particular committee, that one person can reject anything and everything that goes before it, and unfortunately, it has happened numerous times. The state code says you can boost that up to five members instead of three, and that one person can't condemn it anymore. It'll take a vote of more than one person. So I thought it would be something that would show the people, like small business people, for example, who want to come into town, who want to do some building, that we are actually thinking about changing our reputation by making things a little bit more friendly.
Okay. So we need to send this to advertising and then take a final vote after that period ends, is that correct? Or we don't need to send it?
We don't need to send it down.
Okay. Mr. Columbodis?
I served on the Zoning Board of Appeals for three or four years, and I found that we rarely, that we were all too amenable to approving variances as compared to other towns. I looked into some other towns, and the approval of variances requires three criteria, and we often are much more lenient in approving them, so I don't think we've had in the history of being too rigid on the approval of the variances. Mr. Souza's points about being business friendly, I think, I think we might have that reputation, and I think we're addressing that by changing our, fixing our zoning, which is really, by our own admission, you know, 15 years ago, our master plan said our zoning was a mess. And we've tinkered with it a little bit since then, but we really haven't reconciled any, you know, the inconsistencies and some of the antiquated language, and so by, you know, with the zoning overhaul, hopefully we'll preclude the need for variances, that we'll have clearer language, that'll clearly express what kind of development the town would like to see, and so I don't see the need for increased leniency in the issuance of variances, which is, seems to be the aim of this legislation.
Yes.
And just another point, we were talking about by adding more people to boards that we already have trouble filling the seats for. It would slow the process down by not having quorum, and by looking for people who kind of have the skill set for this board, by making it even larger, because it's someone that you're going to have people who have the right skill set, and by looking for larger groups of people, it makes it harder for us to find who live in town. So the issues that we heard about being unfriendly to business, there are numerous other things that we could be doing outside of the ZBA to be making Bridgewater more friendly to business, and those are the things that I feel like the petitioner, Mr. Souza, can look into, and work with our Economic Development Director to help Bridgewater be more business-friendly as opposed to adding more people to the board that...
So our options tonight are either, we can either send it to advertising or table this indefinitely.
I move to table indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Loesch?
No, nothing further.
Mr. Columbodis? Okay, this, the voice vote, all those in favor of tabling this indefinitely, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
It's tabled. No. Okay. Ordinance FY 18-018, zoning ordinance, amend zoning bylaws 7.4 signs. The Community and Economic Development Committee and Planning Board conducted a joint public hearing on 7/23/18. At the conclusion of the meeting, the Planning Board voted unanimously not to recommend this measure, and the Community and Economic Development Committee voted unanimously not to recommend this measure. This measure may not be adopted this evening, as it requires additional advertising. I assume this is probably the same thought process a little bit as the other one on this. I'll entertain a motion either to send it to advertising or table this indefinitely.
I move to table indefinitely. Well...
There's a motion to, is there a second?
I would say.
Okay. The second by Mr. Chase, Ms. Loesch.
There's going to be, as we know, an overhaul of our zoning, so by tabling it, I want to ensure that we'll still be able to look at signs at another given time. Okay, then yes.
Good point. Okay. Mr. Souza?
The reason I put it in is simple. We have commercial property set out there, land, that a builder can come in and put up a building, open up his little business. Under the current code, first of all, it goes by property line, and there was some confusion at the meeting, road edge or curb or whatever you want to call it, versus property line. Property line in some cases could be four to six feet in from the curb. Now, take your sign and move it 12 feet in from that property line. You have a sign that's anywhere from 16 to 18 feet in from the curb. And there's many places in town where these lots are that are treat areas, and you put a sign 16 feet in from the curb, no one's going to see it. So what happens is, the person goes down, gets a permit for the building, and has absolutely no problem. But now has to go to the board, has to spend the money to go to the board and do the advertising, do everything that has to be done, just to ask to move that sign so that it is a minimum, the frontage of the sign is a minimum of four feet in from the property line. And I know that that's just a waste of money, and it's a waste of time, you see? And if it was me, and I was going to build the building, I would not start that building until I got approval for my sign, because I don't want it 18, 16 feet back from the road, okay? And there's times, we see these things, they get delayed, and they carry on, and they go on, and they go on, and they go on, you know? A bank is only going to hold your interest rate for a certain period of time, and then you're going to have to renegotiate it, and sometimes you get into these crazy hearings. And that's why I said, why even force that person to go in, okay? And look around, I mean, just go up 104, you're going to see where they built that doctor's office, and they built a house right in front of, there's two signs there. They had to go and get approval for both of those signs moved. That's just too recent, that I know of, and there's others probably. So, you know, talk about business friendly, just make them go spend money that they don't have to, and stall off for two, three months, they get approval to move a sign.
Okay, there's a motion, there's any further discussion? Mr. Columbodis?
I think our committee understood from the rationale for this setback of signs is largely for, to maintain sightlines for cars entering and exiting, I guess exiting more, and that this seems to be a convention throughout towns, for most towns. And for those situations where this, that setback doesn't make sense, there's the variance process through the ZBA. Another factor influencing our decision not to recommend this was the fact that we are undertaking this comprehensive zoning, which will include sign ordinances, so we just thought it made sense to wait and do a more comprehensive, take a more comprehensive look at this.
Okay. This requires a voice vote. The motion is to table this indefinitely, ordinance FY 18-018. All those in favor of tabling this indefinitely, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes. Next ordinance FY 18-018, ordinance to amend Section 19, mixed-use CBD of zoning bylaws. The Community and Economic Development Committee and Planning Board conducted a public, a joint public hearing on 7/23/18. At the conclusion of the meeting, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend this measure, and the Community and Economic Development Committee voted unanimously to recommend this measure. This measure may not be finally voted this evening, and it requires, as it requires adoption of proposed amendments and additional advertising.
Motion to send to advertising?
As amended? Do we need to vote on it?
I was going to make a second, I was going to make a second, a motion to amend.
Okay. Second, is there a second to send it to advertising? Is a second to send it to advertising? Mr. Fitzgibbons? Any discussion on the amendment?
No, well, I'd like to make a motion to amend as indicated.
I'll second that.
There's a motion to amend as indicated, any discussion on the amendments?
Defer to Mr. Columbodis.
Columbodis?
I'd like to defer to our Community and Economic Development Director, Mrs. Burke. Ms. Burke? Do we have, I think perhaps an overall explanation for the, what this ordinance achieves and its rationale would be.
Sure.
In order. Thank you.
Sorry you had to sit through this three-hour meeting.
That's all right. Thank you, good evening.
Can I just interrupt for one second? In your packet, you actually have two copies? Right. The, and it's so great. So the first copy was the one I stumbled through at our last meeting, because it has the amendments, but we saw it in our working sessions as a clean version, so you also have a clean copy, assuming that the amendments pass. Thank you.
So, just a little history, I came into this project sort of, I guess towards the end, I was hired in the town of Bridgewater in February as your Community and Economic Development Director, and this project was already sort of underway. There had been a working group established to work with a developer in the downtown, the Broad Street area, to work on the updating of the zoning for the mixed-use Central Business District. I was asked to look at what had been talked about, what had been discussed, and in my review of things, I had determined and talked with the town manager that we should be looking globally and holistically at our Central Business District and our mixed-use zoning, and not development-specific, and we should be deciding what we as a community and as a town want to see in our Central Business District, and then the developers would have to sort of refocus their projects on what we would want to see there. So that was the objective I set out with this. I basically took it and ran with it, then I presented it to the Subcommittee, Ad-Hoc Committee, and they liked what I had proposed, and then I met with Mr. Columbodis, and then the Chair of the Planning Board, Mr. Driscoll. They both, I think, were appreciative of my work and my efforts, and then presented it to the Joint Committee the other day, and we were successful. So I'll go through what the amendments were, and if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Initially, it was, it has always been a special permit use, so, but we had never had any, outlined any special permit criteria, so I had put in here some special permit criteria that the Planning Board now has, some criteria that they can grant the special permits with. This is something that should be in all of our zoning regarding special permits, and so we're going to be moving forward and doing a lot of that. So that's sort of the first section under 19.02. The approval criteria talks about, it has to comply with the provisions of the article, the impact of the development activities, it has to be of benefit of the town, it talks about the intersections and roadways providing access to the project, will operate at an acceptable level of service based on the anticipated impacts of vehicular traffic from all proposed development. The plan has to provide adequate, provide adequately for convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the project in relation to the streets and property improvements inside the project, and the plan has to provide for the adequacy of methods of disposal of sewage, refuse, and other waste, provisions for utilities, the methods of drainage, surface water, seasonal flooding, and if any, adequate provisions for water for domestic purposes. They seem like common sense things, but sometimes if you don't write them in there, people won't do them. So that was the first section. And then the next section that we updated was under 1904, number eight, which is our density allowance. This is probably the biggest change in this whole section. The underlying density remains at 18 units per acre, that's their byright density, that hasn't changed, but we have allowed for a bonus density, a bonus density of up to 26 units per acre, if they take advantage of the density bonuses that are laid out here in the new zoning. So it talks about transfer development rights, preservation of historic structures, the donation of open space, payment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, public streetscape improvements, public streetscape improvements and providing solar energy or green roofs. So all of those things, if they provide one, two, or all eight, six of them, seven of them, they would get an additional however many units based on what they were providing if the planning board feels that they are of a public benefit to the town of Bridgewater. Density bonuses are solely at the discretion of the planning board. So the developer could come in and say, I'm planting three trees, so I get three units. Well, that's not how that works. So the planning board has to determine as a special permit granting authority that there truly is a public benefit for whatever the developer is providing to the town. Then we've established some additional design guidelines and design criteria, including that if you own contiguous parcels in the district, they have to be developed and designed as one parcel so that we're not seeing, you know, four separate structures with four curb cuts along the main street or the Broad Street that everybody's looking at this holistically and we're really looking at a downtown revitalization project. They, we reduced the lot size, frontage requirements and setback requirements to zero so that we could have businesses right up on the front, on the street, on Broad Street or Main Street or whatever street, you know, that is in the business district so that the commercial windows could be right on the street and all the parking can be in the rear. And then we also changed, we'd still require a commercial component, but instead of it all being on the first floor now, we looked at some of the properties in the district that have a potential for redevelopment. And due to the topography and the shape, there's a potential that somebody may want to do one whole building along the streetscape as commercial, first floor, second floor, and then do buildings in the rear that might abut the river, all residential. So now we allow for commercial and separate buildings as long as all of the buildings that are on the streetscape have commercial at least in the first floor. So that was a change. And then some of the other design guidelines we changed were we increased the height to four stories or 45 feet in height. We're now allowing for flat roofs because if we're going to allow for solar or green roofs, we have to allow for flat roofs. We've increased some of the vegetation requirements to require some vegetation in the parking lots that wasn't required before. And that the street facade should ensure that the landscaping and they don't detract from the character of the area, that they sort of enhance the area, that they blend in with the area. We're not allowing units larger than two bedrooms in these projects, so only one and two bedrooms. And that should be a balanced mix. And that we reduced the parking requirement from two spaces per unit to one space per unit. It's common in downtowns when you have this kind of dense development that there's shared parking, that there's, you know, when you're, especially when you're having one and two units, you're not, probably not going to see multiple vehicles in these apartments. You're going to see people using the train, you're going to see those kinds of things. So we felt that reducing it to one space per unit was not, you know, cumbersome. We're also requiring three, one visitor space for every three units. So there's about 1.3 spaces per unit average. And we are allowing for shared parking with the commercial use so that you could anticipate that people, if there are commercial businesses that don't operate in the evening, when the people come home from work, they would be able to use those spaces as well. All the parking areas should be behind the buildings unless the planning board feels that there's a topography issue or some special circumstance that that can't happen, then they have the ability to waive that. And that the drive aisle is a minimum of 18 feet unless there's one-way traffic proposed. So I think those are the major components that have been changed through the zoning amendments. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, any other questions regarding the ordinance? There's a motion and there's a second. Is there a motion?
Well, there's been a motion to amend and I believe we've just heard the rationale for the amendments. I'd just like to say thank you for going through all that for us so that we understand that it looks like you put in a lot of work and a lot of common sense things like, what are the criteria that the special permit granting authority has? And so on and so forth, which is, as Mr. Colum Botes keeps reminding us, we have to rationalize all of our zoning, not just one section at a time. But we'll get there, but thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Colum Botes?
I think this is, I'd like to thank Ms. Burke for all the work she put in. This really makes sense. It's really, up until now, we haven't allowed mixed uses within downtown, within the central business district. And it's really kind of returning to an old model of how downtowns develop. We had a store on the first floor and residents above to frequent the buildings. They were pedestrian-friendly. And I think it'll be a great change. I think, you know, I think we're going to get a lot of positive response from private investors. And this is kind of the wave of the future. I think you see a lot of downtowns realizing that they want to go this way and that strip malls and automobile-centered development is not necessarily all that viable anymore. So I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Okay. So.
Just one additional point for those that might be concerned, we just said no to two other zoning. Why are we saying yes to this one? It was just, as Ms. Burke mentioned, it was already kind of in play. And when we do do the overhaul of all the zoning, this can be tweaked as well. So it's not that we're stuck with it, just like we're not stuck with talking about signs again. But this was something that was more urgent just because of what we've already started. If we hadn't started, it probably would be part of the overall comprehensive zoning. So that's why we were recommending this one to move.
Okay, so is there a motion on the floor for amending? There is, and there's a second, that was discussion. So all those in favor of the order as amended? What's that?
The amendment itself.
On the amendment?
On the amendment itself, right. All those in favor of the amendment itself?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we need to vote to send this to advertising.
It's been moved.
You did, that's right, you did them both at the same time. That's what, that was the last, I thought that was the last one. We've been talking about this one for a while. So there's already a motion and a second to send this to advertising. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So off to advertising that goes. New business order FY 019-015, transfer order capital transfer LED light conversion. I guess the town manager wants to just explain briefly what this is.
Sure, this is the first step in the conversion process and it will pay for the assessment of our current system and an inventory of all the lights and as well as a design for the LED system.
This needs to be referred to budget and finance and the finance committee.
Motion to refer to budget and finance and finance committees?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order FY 19-016, transfer order sewer and water reserves, special purpose for loan paydown. Town manager?
This one is actually mostly a housekeeping provision. We had voted to borrow money long, years ago to do our comprehensive wastewater plan, or I'm sorry, our stormwater management plan. And instead of actually going out to borrow, we simply are going to pay it off.
Motion to refer to the budget and finance and finance committees?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order FY 19-017, transfer order, town manager, special account to capital funds.
This is similar, it's mostly housekeeping. The town, the finance director would like to build new accounts for both of these and those are the current balances in each of those accounts.
Motion to refer to the budget and finance and finance committees?
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order FY 19-018, transfer order appropriation for street assessment. Town manager?
This, this transfer is, will be used to fund the study that we are currently doing on street and sidewalk condition and maintenance program. This particular transfer will also pay for the first year of what will be a permanent, well, as permanent as anything is, a permanent software system that we can use to track all the improvements that we make. And it's quite a robust system, so. I encourage you to transfer it on to budget and finance and finance.
Motion to refer to the budget and finance and finance committees?
Second.
Motion, there's a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? I'll now revert back to the town manager's report that was deferred earlier. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a few items, let me just pull them up. Just a number of, a couple of things that are on the, will be on an upcoming agenda for the council, probably a couple of them in September and then one perhaps further off. We'll be looking to ask the council to appropriate funds for full-fledged traffic design or traffics, I don't want to call it a traffic study, traffic design of the downtown traffic patterns and make recommendations for changes, all pursuant to the downtown revitalization plan from back in 2015. Also, we'll be looking to ask the council to adopt an ordinance regarding repairs to private ways. That's what it's actually called. This is a piece of legislation that's actually necessary so that we can bond the First Street Sewer Project and then assess betterments back to the owners along that street. So a lot of that plays into Mass Works Grant as well as the Elm Street, Elm Street rebuilding project. So we're trying to keep on a schedule there. So that you'll see at your next meeting, September 11th. Also, there was a typo in the ratification of the American Tower lease. And because that is of particular interest to American Tower and they have to go through some insurance issues there, I'll bring that back and we'll start it anew instead of just simply trying to correct the typo. It was in the legislation, the ratification legislation, it said 20 years and it's actually a 49 year is what we had reviewed with finance committee and budget and finance. So not a huge issue, but we'll come back and redo that one. So those are upcoming. So I just also want to let you know the townwide rezoning project is underway. We're creating two committees. One is what's referred to as the zoning recodification committee. That's made up of the building inspector, community and economic development director, town engineer and the chairs of the planning and CED committee. And that mostly will be working on the mechanics of proposed revisions to zoning. Second committee is the comprehensive plan committee, which will have a very broad range of members. And that committee will focus on planning and revisions which ultimately will affect the community, hopefully all for the better. So that is underway and I'm just formulating mostly the second committee at this point. So I think we'll be in good shape there. We've had, happy to report several interns joining us this summer. We've done that in partnership with BSU. We've also had a Bridgewater-Ranham Regional High School student join us for an internship. She attended Student Government Day last year and then reached out to us afterwards looking for any internship opportunities, so we're happy to bring her on. We're placing three this summer, one in finance, one in information technologies and social media, and then the other in community and economic development. So we've got a good, good, robust core of people interested in municipal work and I hope that continues. We've been very fortunate to work with BSU on placing students and we've made some good commitments to them. The paid parking vendor, we've selected Laz Parking as our vendor and we had a kickoff meeting yesterday and discussed implementation and assigned all the tasks that we have to do to get up and running. We are right now planning on a Thanksgiving weekend rollout. We don't want to, we could do it earlier, but it would not be for the beginning of the school year just because of the things that we have to accomplish, each of us has to accomplish before implementation. So that's, we are targeting Thanksgiving weekend. Obviously, long before that, we'll have a lot of communication and a lot of information pushed out so that people are well aware. BSU has also offered to allow us to use their communication network so that all the students and staff will be very well aware by the time it actually rolls out. We are hosting a reminder, we're hosting a presentation from Susan Connelly of MHP on 40B financing and housing needs, and that's tentatively scheduled for September 5th. I'll send reminders out to certainly the council and then all other land use and related committees. So I think that'll be a valuable session to attend. She's very good at those explanations. The Mitchell School Building Committee update. Right now, the architect is reviewing some access issues relative to where the Mitchell School sits currently. Also, the MSB rules require that the architects look at potential alternative sites for the Mitchell School and they are in that process. I don't think that that's going to take very long because based on the existing options, it's very likely that there won't be other feasible locations for that school. But that is a process that they go through and make recommendations, obviously to the school building committee at the next meeting. Just want to let people know, Councilor George is not here tonight, but he must have been knocking on doors throughout the community because he has supplied us with a number of potential applicants and generated a lot of interest in serving on a number of different town boards and committees. But we are still looking for folks for the Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Finance Committee, we're looking for an alternate on the planning board. We're looking for several more members of Open Space Committee and the Water and Sewer Board, certainly among others. So anybody interested, feel free to reach out to me or the town manager's office. And the town website has some information there as well. And finally, if I can make the right-handed mouse work for me. Nope, there we go. I just wanted to show you as part of our assessment of streets, streets and sidewalks, which has already begun with the roadways department, what they have done, and actually also because we've had some road potholes, chronic potholes. But what they've done is send a camera down into the drainage system. What I'm going to show you is one street in Bridgewater that we had not anticipated needing significant repair. And what Ron's going to be proposing is a complete rebuilding to the tune of probably a million three within the next eight months or so. So. So let me just. So this is, this is not something your doctor shows you. This is actually underneath the street, we have over the years installed corrugated aluminum as drainage and corrugated aluminum, all the aluminum that we've installed is beginning to decay and rot. So what you see here up above where it's sort of a mottled color but white, white indicate, at least in these pictures, indicates areas where that has begun to fail. Certainly sort of rot out, the metals rotted out. What happens when it rots out is that it caves, begins to cave in from the top and debris starts to fill in in the pipe. And I'll skip ahead unless anybody really wants to watch the whole thing. But you can see along the top here, that's all beginning to rot out. And again, up here. So here you see all of this debris. And the camera can see 360 degrees in case you're wondering. But all that debris, and there's the wheel is stuck on the debris. But all of that debris has come not from the storm drains, but that's come from up above or somewhere in close proximity to where the camera is stuck. So that, that's all still stones. If you see stones, that's of particular concern because that means a real break in the pipe. So that's one video. And this is a little bit of the same. And this is a little bit of the same. I was going to hopefully show you a pipe that was in good shape. So, there's not a whole lot of debris at the bottom, you can see the ribs of the corrugated pipe, and the camera is shaking because it's actually, the wheels are going over those But again, debris, you know, at the bottom of the pipe, this is all from, you know, the left, right, all the way over to the right is all white, and that's all, you know, some degree of rot in that corrugated aluminum pipe. And I think that's where the camera got stuck. But I'll show you, there we go. This is, these are pictures, obviously, and these are particularly bad areas. So, this, you can actually see the failure, and you can see the debris that's flowed in in that particular area. This is actually a more recent repair, and you can see the difference. In this case, this is actually the inside of plastic corrugated, so this is a, this is not an aluminum corrugated, so the white hinge here is not, is not rot. But you can see, as I said, this is a repair, so this debris has entered the system somewhere, probably at the connection between the repair and the aluminum corrugated. So, that's, here's just a picture of larger, larger rocks that have gotten into the system. This is the aluminum corrugated, so rot. And that's, so anybody that wants to purchase a black and white glossy, feel free to contact me. But I show you that, just to give you an idea of the process that we're going through to really do a total assessment of the streets. Now, this particular street, as I say, it's about a little less than a mile, one of our, you know, more heavily traveled thoroughfares, and we're, Ron's working with Tony Solomati to come up with a plan, a more urgent sort of emergency plan to deal with this one and possibly South Street as well, because we're going to have some issues there. Not as urgent as this one, but certainly very similar. So, Ron had tentatively scheduled to grind and repave South Street this fall, because he was able to secure the funding, but he's going to have to put that off now, because there's no point in putting that work into a street that probably will have to get dug up and drainage installed and then redone sometime within the next year and a half or so. So, that, I had the opportunity to show you pictures, and I thought pictures can sell a thousand words, so that's just to give you some idea of what's sort of coming.
That's about 10,000 words per hour in this report?
Well, if you want, and the picture adds another, I showed you seven pictures. So, that's a, that's just a little bit of background, and so, obviously, when we come November 1st, you'll get a pretty robust report, and you'll, you know, see a lot of this included in that, so that's what I have.
Any questions for the Town Manager?
In general?
In whatever general, go ahead.
You talked a little bit of, let me change subjects. So, there's some corner shrubs at various intersections, which are on private property. Does the town have the ability to request the homeowner to cut those back? There's a couple intersections I won't mention, like Mount Prospect and Center Street and Grove in Bedford. I won't mention those intersections, but I'm thinking of those. So, is there any mechanisms to do that?
I believe there are, I'll have to, I'll have to get definitive answer on that, but I think, I think there are steps that we can take to trim back or ask the homeowner to trim back, yeah.
I know that at least one of those intersections has an accident all the time. I don't know if that's a contributing factor. I know I, as an experienced driver, have difficulty seeing out down the south lane until I'm almost out into the intersection of Bedford Street. The second one is, a neighbor of Tim's mentioned to me that there's some sort of survey underway, maybe about downtown, but I hadn't seen anything, and maybe you covered it under one of these other surveys. Is there another specific, like downtown revitalization survey going on?
No, not, not specific to downtown. What's going on, there's a survey that we're doing through the Strategic Planning Consultant as part of the strategic planning process, and it's, I believe, a 25-question survey. It's, they're looking to get about 300 participants from that survey, and they know their business better than I do, but it's, I'm satisfied, it's a fairly representative random sampling of folks. So, they, doing that survey, that'll be coming out within the next week or two, actually. And it'll be, they'll use phone data that they have, they'll, you know, we'll put it on the website, there'll be a link to it, so if people want to fill it out online, they can do that, but it's, but that's pursuant to strategic planning.
Okay, final question, if I may. So, the parking won't happen until Thanksgiving, does that mean the parking on School Street just remains open, parking to whomever grabs a spot first thing in the morning?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the Town Manager? Mr. Colomboas?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Gattin, is there any, any development on relocating the central fire station?
We have, obviously, had a lot of conversations with the fire chief about that, and we have not, we have not, certainly not at the point where we put together a committee to develop a thorough plan, but we do know that that fire station needs to find a new home for a number of reasons, and from my perspective, and it's, you know, jumping ahead a little bit, but it sits on what is an opportunity zone, opportunity for us. So, it's a, conceivably, once, once opportunity zones have been really fleshed out by the federal government, the IRS, and the Treasury Department, that's a prime development opportunity, quality development opportunity for us, and so, we know that it's, it's time to move.
So, what's the next step on that, on moving that process forward?
We will, we'll put together, the fire chief, I've asked the fire chief to put, begin to put together a committee that would be a fire station building committee. We'll look at options that are available, and at some point, we'll be coming to the council, asking for a little bit of money for a feasibility study to give us primarily location, optimum locations, and, you know, charting the path forward on that.
In terms of paid parking on School Street, I know some plan, I can't recall exactly which, called for a bike lane up School Street, and perhaps a widening of the sidewalk, and it seems like that's really important, because that's kind of a major connection corridor to connect these 4,000-plus students and staff with the center of town and a lot of our commercial locations. So, I just wanted to clarify that that's on your radar to create some sort of either bike lane or even a wider pedestrian sidewalk up School Street. So, I just wanted to make sure that happens before we go ahead and put meters in a place that would preclude that.
That's a great question, absolutely. The bike, bike lane is part of the, part of the plan, and I agree, it's, that's actually a pedestrian and a bike thoroughfare that we want to encourage, because it is a direct link between the university and the downtown, number one. The widening of the sidewalks is on the radar, that probably would not happen until something along the lines of a redevelopment of, of the fire station property and as part of something like that. The parking, the paid parking is, there are no meters, per se. There's one kiosk that people can use, and in addition, it's all app-driven, so you don't even need to use the, the kiosk there to purchase anything, so that, really, the amount of land space used by, by the paid parking program is minimal, almost insignificant.
One last thing, is there any, any more progress in clearing out the Town Hall of all the papers and stuff we've got stored there?
Yep, we've got two, two buildings that we are looking to clear out. One is Spring Street Garage, which we will probably get underway within the next several weeks, and the other one is Town Hall. We will be removing everything except for the files right now, and then, then those files will be merged, sorted, and then boxed for storage off, out of that building and off-site, accessible but off-site.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Town Manager, Council of its given?
Just to touch on meters in a different sense, we heard in Citizens' open forum earlier tonight about the water meters and potential safety issues, et cetera. If you could just send an email to the council within the next week or so to let us know what you know, so that we know and we can push it out to people, that would be great.
I will certainly do that. I will say that the meters were, have been very well vetted, there are meters that are used in major cities throughout the country, they're used in neighboring towns of ours, so I don't want anybody to have the impression that we, you know, sort of picked them willy-nilly, but they were very well vetted and recommended by engineering firm that specializes in that work. But I will get some information.
Thank you.
Can I make one more comment? I was just leafing through this copy of the Municipal Advocate that we get, and it's, this issue is focused on transportation infrastructure, and so, I encourage everyone to look at it. I mean, obviously, infrastructure, roads, and, you know, as we see with this new, you know, roughly million-dollar cost that we're going to be incurring, it's an important issue. It's important for economic development especially, and for quality life, so I urge everyone to take a look at this issue, it seems interesting.
If you, just to add to that, if you particularly read the Auburn case study, that lays out pretty much half of what, what I was going to present to you in November.
Any other questions from the councils? I have a couple of questions. On the finances for the town, where are we with year-end, and when can we see a report as revenue and expenses to date, or as of June 30th, if you will?
You should get that, I know Lori was out this week, but you should have that very shortly. If you haven't gotten it already, I'll make sure that you get it.
I haven't, I haven't, okay. And I want to go back to the McElwain School for a couple of questions, because the developer sent out an email, and I've talked to a few residents in town about this issue, and I've probably asked these questions before, but I just want clarification tonight and maybe clarification again in the future. The purchase and sales agreement that we signed, when do we expect to see the money from that sale?
The purchase and sale agreement that you ratified gave a date, I believe it was beginning, outside date of the beginning of 2021. It is very likely that the actual closing date would be something much sooner than that. As I mentioned, you know, when we were talking about it, the PNS for this kind of project is much different than, than you might have for your, your home, when you, when you do a home purchase. When projects like these are developed, they are financed in such a complex kind of way with such a number of different financing sources, that they need to apply for those grants, they need to do what they have to do to apply for the federal and state tax credits, historic tax credits. So, there's a process they have to go through once they execute the purchase and sale. Executing the purchase and sale gives them what's referred to in that world as site control, and they have to have site control before they can actually apply for, for those funding, from, from those funding agencies. But I think they've done a really good job at the state level of making sure that state funding agencies know about this project, that they, and making sure that they talk it up so the state funding agencies, you know, know what's coming in the door and like what's coming in the door, and it comes in the door with, you know, all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So, so I'm confident that the closing will be much earlier than that. Can I give you a date? I couldn't give you a date at this point, but I know, like any developer, they're very anxious, more anxious than anybody to get going.
The process that you explained, and, you know, the term that was given to me by some people was the word subplantation, that if they were to get this money from various grants and then turn around and give us the $648,000, that that is, according to them, subplantation, and that would be a violation. Is that true? And again, I want to see that money come in and put into one of our capitalization funds, and that can, that is going to happen, and this subplantation issue or, you know, term does not apply here, is that correct?
That is correct. The supplement, what you said, is, is when the town, when the town votes town funds, for instance, out of CPC, and then somehow that, you know, comes back to the town in its general fund. When, when this deal is done, those funds have to go into the capital, capital stabilization account, they, they can't go back into the general fund, so that that issue doesn't, doesn't exist here. I did ask our special counsel to reach out to the Department of Revenue, because I have, same as you, have heard this, this sort of bandied about. So, I asked him to go directly to the Department of Revenue and, and get a written opinion from Department of Revenue on exactly why, you know, what that is and why that doesn't apply in this case. And he's, I know he's had discussions with them, and I think he's just waiting on some writing back from them, so.
That's, it's good to hear, I'm glad to hear that, and I might ask that again as I venture out in this community and as this issue comes up, but, I mean, I just thought that the purchase and sales agreement was kind of like a separate issue, that we would sign over the bill, you know, get our money for the bill, and then they go forward with their, with their, with their grant money, because it also mentioned in that email that we all got, that they were fortunate enough to be able to acquire the property next door. And I assume they're not going to wait till 2021 to get their money, but if they have the money to pay them, why don't they have the money to pay us? So, I understand it's a complicated purchase and sales agreement, but it, usually, when you purchase something, you pay for it upfront or within a short period of time, not years. That's all I have, let's see, what else we got here? Citizens comments, are there any citizens here that wish to speak in open, the citizens' comments portion of this meeting? Seeing none, I'll move on to council comments, I'll start with Councilor Souza.
Kind of a little disappointed today. Don't have to go into it any further, but I think our zoning problem in town is just getting worse. One time, we say, no more spot zoning, next week, we say, let's do a whole pile of it, and spending $90,000 here, $28,000 over here, and then in the middle, we're doing this, this, and this, which is all conflict and with it, and supposedly, it's supposed to work out somewhere, and I just don't see it happening, I just think we're staying in the same pattern that we had for 15, 20 years.
I didn't mean to, I guess I need to respond directly to Mr. Souza's comments. Bridgewater's experienced dramatic growth over the last 40 years. We've, I don't know, lost tons of open space, our residential, and it's all been residential growth. And over the 30, last 30 years, we were without a planner at all for a good 10, 15 years. And then we've, and then more recently, we had hired Mr. Guimond, he, after his vacancy, we were without a planner for another six months at least, another year. we were without a planner for another six months at least, another year. And then after Mr. Iyono left, we were without a planner for another six months or a year, so I think that with Ms. Burke here and with hiring consultants to do this comprehensive zoning, we're doing something different for the first time, and this is, if you look at some of these infrastructure difficulties we're having with roadways being underbuilt, sewer pipes not, you know, not holding up, I think that's all the result of us growing really fast without planning, without spending the money to make things last, and I think we're finally changing that, and I think it bodes well for the future. You know, everyone who comes into town says the town has good bones. We've got this, you know, traditional New England village right here, train station, big public university, really nice housing stock within a short diameter, and yet, we've never really been able to develop in a way that's healthy and productive and good for our bottom line. I think we're finally on that road, and I'm really encouraged, so I, I'm optimistic. Thanks.
Mr. Wood?
I'm optimistic, too, but it's August, let's get back to vacation.
Is that it?
That's it.
Well, I'll echo that. I wish everyone a very enjoyable end of summer, and look forward to seeing my call to Higgs on September 11th.
Happy Labor Day.
No, 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 that's too soon.
Isn't that before we meet again? Okay, okay. Thank you for the lively discussion, I think we had some great discussion here tonight. I want to thank Councilor George for encouraging all the folks that he has to apply. If there are any residents left that Mr. George did not speak to and still want to volunteer, I'm sure the postings are still up on the website to do so, and I'm looking forward to getting alcohol at skips, and we'll see how that turns out.
Just to amplify on what Mr. Colomboas said, last year, as I was helping my parents clean out their house from 40-plus years of living in Bridgewater, I found a League of Women Voters pamphlet from 1969, and I looked at the number of registered voters in the town, there were fewer registered voters in the town less than 50 years ago than there are children going to school K to 12 in the town today, so that's quite a difference. And on skips, you know, I don't know what the saying is, the old saying, "Used to be fool me once, shame on you; fool me twice, shame on me." I don't know how often we need to be fooled anymore, so thank you, Mr. Wood, for continuing or making a new hearing for revocation if things don't go right, because, you know, I was frankly, I didn't hear anything that told me that, why they weren't living up to their license tonight, so. Mr. Gold?
Thank you. On that note, I hope that they can get their things completed and skips can be opened by our next meeting, or before, or before. And we do not meet again until September 11th, so enjoy the rest of the summer, and the Patriots will have played at least one regular season game by the time we meet again, and I will venture back to the Cape for my vacation after this meeting. Is there a need for an executive session? No need for executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All is in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.